If I may, I'd like to go to comments and input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President. I believe we have thirty-one speakers this evening.
Okay. As a reminder to everyone, three minutes. Be respectful to each other and respectful to this council. So, call your first speaker.
Nancy Post, followed by Benjamin Heiser.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address for the record.
Good evening. Nancy Post, I live in Abingdon. My address is on file.
I need your address, ma'am.
411 Green Tree Circle.
Thank you, ma'am.
I ask all members of the council to vote in support of County Executive Cassily's six-month warehouse moratorium. Many concerned citizens previously requested this in opposition to the destruction of Abingdon Woods and Perryman Peninsula. Citizens' voices need to be heard and heeded by council over the noise and temptations offered by developers. Citizens must live among the ruins of overdevelopment. We suffer the consequences of inescapable air and noise pollution, congested roads, dead animals laying in roads due to lost habitat, loss of nature's tranquility, increased crime rates, and more. Harford government is turning our county into Baltimore County. Diverse and lower socio-economic Southern Harford has suffered the worst of it. Precious little unadulterated natural habitat remains. Once the moratorium is passed, the six-month period must not simply be window dressing or for show, but must include an earnest and thorough study of zoning, development, and permit regulations and procedures with a primary focus on warehouse and distribution center construction. Citizen involvement must be a key component of the moratorium process to achieve good results and transparency. Mr. John Carrari remarked in a June 7, 2022 meeting that a council member knew a lot of the secrets and where a lot of the bodies are buried pertaining to Harford County affairs. It is for this reason and many others, including personal benefit and/or agendas, that I support reasonable consecutive and lifelong-term limits for all elected Harford officials, including council members, council president, and county executive. It is my hope that the new council members have brought along their fresh ideas, moral fortitude, selfless goodwill, and determination to reflect the will of their constituents. Mr. Bennett is one such council member. I request that the county executive and council drop their lawsuit against Mr. Bennett and rightfully accept him fully on the council as done for former long-term Republican council member and President Mr. Slutsky. Per evidence of the destruction of Harford by developers aided by Harford officials, the greatest conflict of interest is not from a teacher employed by the Board of Education but by the Harford politicians and officials who benefit from developers' coffers, favors, or the like. Thank you.
Ma'am, just for clarity, the council has no lawsuit against Mr. Bennett.
Was that dropped?
Just for clarity. There never was one, ma'am. Not from the council. Call your next speaker.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Good evening. Benjamin Heiser, 3412 Widows Care, Fallsdale, Maryland, 21047. Thank you all for having me here tonight, allowing me to speak. I just have two items. Number one is very important, that Harford County take into consideration the rapid growth and population, which is creating a strain on every resource that we have. However, the largest resource stress that we're having right now is volunteer fire and EMS. I understand fiscally it is very difficult right now to calculate the costs, especially how we are right now in our financial situation. However, we must create a roadmap and change whether these volunteer firemen and firewomen and EMS are to actually be employees or not. We are a fast-growing county, and we will be way more successful than Baltimore County will be. In order for us to remain nice and safe, we really do need to create a roadmap and work on these things over the next year. My second item is our county executive will be providing to you three nominations for the Board of Education: Dr. Pointon, Ms. Strauss, and Ms. Kuchar. I request that these candidates be confirmed without any further delay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Brendan Patton, followed by Joshua Barry.
Good evening, sir. Name an address, please.
Brendan Patton, 2054 Park Beach Drive, Perryman.
Thanks, sir.
I've come here tonight to discuss the Harford County zoning code and its lack of enforcement on the industrial developments planned and current impairment. I've printed out a couple of sections of the code. You shall have a copy of that in front of you. I'll start with page one of the zoning code. Now, I'm quoting directly from paragraph 367-3A titled "Purpose." The purpose of the zoning code is to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. It goes on to say that the purpose is, quote, "for the conservation of natural resources, including the preservation of productive agricultural land." The last line in this paragraph also states the purpose of the code is to conserve the value of property. The proposed freight terminal on the Mitchell Farm in Perryman goes against the very purpose of the Harford County zoning code. The code is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. The only access road to Perryman is a two-lane road with no shoulders lined with residential homes. Does bringing thousands of diesel-burning trucks down that road promote the health and safety of the community? I don't think so. It also states that the code's purpose is to promote the conservation of natural resources, including the preservation of agricultural land. Does paving over ten million square feet of farmland in Perryman, does that promote the conservation of natural resources? No. Also, part of this ten million square feet covers part of the Harford County wellhead protection area. Does paving over the wellhead protection area protect natural resources? No. It threatens our most important resource, clean water. The last line in paragraph A says that the zoning code is to conserve the value of property. Does building a freight terminal in the middle of a residential area conserve the property values of those people? Of course it doesn't. Property values in Perryman are already negatively being affected, and they will continue to be negatively affected if this project is developed. One property owner does not have the right to diminish everyone else's property value in the neighborhood. Paragraph B of the same section of the code says that the zoning code will not be interpreted or implemented in any manner as to interfere with the person's use of their home, commonly associated with the enjoyment of the home. So, do you think building a freight terminal on someone's backyard is going to interfere with their enjoyment of their home? Of course it is. So, we haven't even got past page one of the Harford County zoning code, and we can see the proposed Mitchell development is in conflict with the purpose. The next page I printed for you is a permitted use chart. It shows that, it's page 136 of the code, it shows that specifically listed as prohibited in the LI district, which is what the Mitchell property is, is commercial vehicle and equipment storage. Prohibited. The next page I printed for you is page 145. On this page, you'll see two specific uses listed: freight terminal and truck stop terminal. Both not permitted in a light industrial area. So, let's look at the last page in the seconds we have left. It defines "general industrial district." The district is intended for industrial uses of a large scale, more intensive processing, and unenclosed storage, which may substantially impact surrounding properties. This sounds exactly like the proposed development. That's a general industrial use. It's not permitted in light industrial. I'm not sure why this project has not been tossed out by Harford County Planning and Zoning yet. It doesn't make any sense to me. Please vote for the moratorium and take that time to investigate why this wasn't thrown out as soon as it was presented to the Harford County Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, sir. Name an address, please.
Good evening, guys. Joshua Barry, 1307 Artist Lane. How are you guys doing? So, I hope and pray that with Mrs. Hahn and Mrs. Alvarez, along with Bob Cassily's Board of Education appointments, we can stop things like the following example from happening in our school district. This is a summary on how the LGBT cult is destroying girls with the help of schools, judges, lawyers, and doctors. Recently, the state of Virginia House of Delegates has introduced a bill called Sage's Law with the aim of protecting children from groomers, schools, and sex traffickers. The history behind the impetus of this law is stomach churning to the extreme. It says as follows: "The girl's school encouraged her to live as a boy after she adopted trans ideology solely as a way to fit in, as the girl saw all the girls there were either lesbian or trans. The school counselors hid the fact that this female was now using a boy's name despite the school being made aware by the mother that Sage had mental health concerns. The girl tried to use the boy's bathroom and got beat up badly. She ran away and was sex trafficked. The FBI found her in a sex trafficking ring based in Baltimore. The judge at the hearing, to get her back, insisted they call her by her male pronouns. When the parents failed to use these fictional pronouns, the judge threw the parents out of court, and then she was put into a boys' home, where she was further drugged by the kids in the home and sexually abused even more. She then ran away from the boys' home and was sex trafficked again. Her radical lawyer wanted to use her as a cash cow all the way to the Supreme Court and hid the letters her family sent her. The doctor at the gender-affirming clinic she was sent to told her to cut off her breasts. Not until the damage and abuse was done was she finally recovered from sex trafficking, where she has since re-identified with her female genetics." So, when you cast your vote for Bob's appointments, understand that regardless of the names that you may be called by those who would rather deify people with mental illness than protect the innocence and purity of children, you're standing up for God's natural order, the moral high ground, restabilizing society, and bringing order back from chaos in the schools, and eventually in the minds of the children who are suffering from these psychological attacks from essentially groomers and pedophiles. Kids identifying as either gay or trans is up to twenty percent in the generation that's in school currently. There is no way this is an accident or naturally occurring without an abundance of indoctrination. Confirm Mr. Cassily's appointments, and let's start putting an end to this destructive ideology. Let it start right here in Harford County and spread to the rest of the county. And with the five seconds I have left, Mr. Bennett, I applaud your desire to be a teacher and serve, and I understand that it's a gray area.
Your time is up, sir.
Being on the council, I would just ask you to recuse yourself for these types of votes that have.
Your time is up, sir.
Harford County School District. Thank you.
Henry Gibbons. Henry Gibbons, followed by Victoria Harvey.
Name an address, please.
Henry Gibbons, 2402 Papaya Road, Edgewood, Maryland. I heard some good things from the county executive, and I'm particularly excited about the attention potentially being paid to the Route 40 corridor, which has not received the attention that it is due over the years. But I want to go with something that really kind of surprised me to hear, and that is the appointment of, or the request to appoint Mr. Joe Cassily to the Ethics Board. While you're reviewing his resume, you might also consider reviewing his background. And before we go into that, I want to explain what the Ethics Board is charged with. It administers the county's Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics determines whether an employee of the county may participate in awarding contracts, directing business, prohibits an employee from using public office for personal gain, from engaging in nepotism, interfering with citizens' rights to participate in political activity, et cetera. And it sets conditions on the kinds of gifts that our public officials may accept. The board investigates, also investigates complaints of potential violations and has the power to refer such matters to the county attorney. So, now for some background on Mr. Joe Cassily. He was disbarred in 2021 for withholding evidence of misconduct and representation in evidence in a murder trial of Mr. John Huffington, who in spite of having his initial conviction sent back twice for new trials, spent thirty-two years in prison before being freed. He was pardoned in 2022 by Governor Hogan. For those who keep track, that's $5,000 a month in prison. That's about $1.9 million in taxpayer dollars just to house him, not to mention legal expenses to the state. But expenses aside, I ask everyone in this room to think about that for a second and ask yourselves what kind of prosecutor you might want to face if your life, your liberty, and your pursuit of happiness were on the line for a crime that you didn't commit. Now, ask yourself whether you'd want someone who's shown a cavalier disregard for someone else's inalienable rights to have a seat on a board with the power to make a criminal referral. The Maryland Court of Appeals ruled then that his conduct was much, quote, "much more egregious than that of a lawyer in an official or government position who simply fails to follow proper procedural rules." And it disbarred him specifically, quote, "to ensure the public's confidence in the legal profession by deterring other attorneys from engaging in similar misconduct." If this is how the impartial courts felt about him, why should Harford County accord him a place of potential influence on matters of legality that influence our perception of legitimacy of our government and then give him a potential conduct to influence legal action? I urge this body not to confirm Mr. Joe Cassily to the Board of Ethics in Harford County and to thereby entrust him with an important position that requires seriously moral fiber to a man with a demonstrably weak thread. Thank you.
My name is Victoria Harvey. I live at 1420 Valbro Court North, Bel Air, Maryland, 21015. I am here to commend Mr. Cassily for having the fortitude to appoint individuals that enhance our Board of Education, especially Dr. Aaron Pointe. His military service as a special operator and entrepreneurial experience is precisely what our Board of Education needs. The Maryland State Legislature is attempting to usurp local BoE's influence on schools by centralizing and legislating currently. Mr. Cassily's three appointments, three appointments will enhance our Board of Education while ensuring parents' concerns are not ignored. As a graduate of Bel Air High, it is appalling to see how much ground our schools have lost educating our children. These three appointments will help our BoE get our schools back on track to educating students with the skills needed to be a successful adult, whether that is going to college, entering the military, the workforce, or a trade school. I assure you, those supporting the appointments are not extreme conservatives or radical fringe as we've been labeled. We are parents that want our children educated, not indoctrinated. Our county executive received sixty-four percent of the vote to win his seat. Those of us that voted for Mr. Cassily into office, that's sixty-four percent in case anybody missed it, back his three appointments. I implore you, I implore you to support our county executive appointments to the Board of Education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Josh Kozel, followed by Melissa Hahn.
Actually, Josh calls to reserve a spot for We the People of Maryland. Respectfully ask for five minutes as I represent an organization.
There will be no five minutes. You're at, is that true, Josh?
I represent an organization.
Okay.
I talked to Ms. Connect, is that her name? Graskey Voice in the office.
So, you'll get three minutes.
Can I register that as We the People?
Appreciate that.
We've kept it all at three minutes for a while now.
Okay. I represent We the People of Maryland.
Yes.
Our mission is to advocate for your right to control your livelihood, your property, your family, and your destiny. Our vision is to provide an organized outlet for Americans who are frustrated by government overreach. You're probably going to hear from some people on the left tonight. They're going to tell you that the newly-appointed BoE members are strong conservatives who will eliminate the ridiculous social engineering the left has been pushing for years. Sadly, I fear they're gaslighting you. Appears to me the status quo will be maintained, and the BoE will turn its focus towards radically inflating the capital budget to greatly benefit large donors in this county. Hope I am wrong. Overdevelopment, this is something we could talk about all night, but we don't have that time. New council has even more ties to the overdevelopers and large donors than any council in recent memory. Some of you will more directly benefit from your decisions than others. I doubt you will have the fortitude to recuse yourself from voting on matters that will directly benefit your bank account. I hope I am wrong. On the subject of medical tyranny, thankfully, the last council removed the far-left political operative Dr. Bashai from his very important position. The Health Department, which you oversee, should never be placing politics above the health of all Harford County residents. You must now dismantle the vaccine passport that was unwisely created under Dr. Bashai. This tyrannical weapon must never be used on the good people of Harford County. We spent a lot of time in here giving testimony to warn how dangerous the jab was. We were ignored. People died sadly. Hope you'll investigate the local hospital and hold accountable the people who profited from killing our citizens with Remdesivir and the Death Vax. It is now obvious the attempted forced vaccinations and forced masking have had a devastatingly negative impact on the health and welfare of our citizens. I hope the leaders responsible for this carnage are held accountable. The Board of Ethics, it's great to see Harford County is addressing the Board of Ethics. Its revival is long overdue, as the terms of all current members have long ago expired, and at least one no longer lives in the county. Please make sure the new Board of Ethics is ready to hit the ground running. There will be leads for them to follow up on. We the People will not be attending every council meeting in person as we have in the past. This is the good news, bad news situation. You won't have thirty speakers calling out your tyrannical behavior on Tuesday nights. There will be more time for you to meet with large donors and plot the sale of Harford County. You can pretend the traffic isn't the nightmare it is and that poor planning has not destroyed Harford's once charming feel. The bad news is we will be using our extra time to dig through financial reports, to expose your backdoor dealings. We will be launching a podcast to discuss the shell companies you launder campaign contributions with. The podcast will shine a light on the dark corrupt side of Harford County politics. We will focus on council members' connections to the overdevelopers and big donors. If you are lucky, we may even reach out to some of you for an interview. Remember, every crooked move you make, every corrupt breath you take, we'll be watching you.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, council members. My name is Melissa Hahn, and my address is 211 Pilesville Road, Pilesville, Maryland, 21132. I feel like I'm.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of myself only, and I do not represent the Board of Education or its members, myself as a citizen of Harford County. I would first like to congratulate our newly-elected and re-elected council members. And I would also like to congratulate our newly-elected county executive, Bob Cassily, and thank him for all of his hard work and dedication to the citizens of Harford County and for taking on the challenging task of finding exceptional candidates to be appointed to the Board of Education. I'm sure it was certainly a difficult task to choose from a large and extensive pool of candidates. That being said, I would like to ask the county council to approve county executives' picks: Ms. Lauren Strauss, Dr. Aaron Pointe, and Ms. Terry Kuchar. I've had the pleasure to work with Ms. Strauss on many occasions. She is an amazing person, and I know that she will always put our children's educational needs first as a member of our Board of Education. I've spoke with Mr. Pointe a few times and a family member of Mr. Kuchar, I'm sorry, Ms. Kuchar, excuse me. I am confident that these three candidates and their vast experiences make them the very best choices for our Board of Education and that they will do an exceptional job, council members. In closing, I ask you to please confirm our county executives' picks for our appointed Board of Education members: Ms. Lauren Strauss, Dr. Aaron Pointe, and Ms. Terry Kuchar. Thank you again, and have a wonderful evening.
Stella Peters, followed by Brenda Pedrick.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Stella Peters, 399 Singer Road. Can you hear me? I didn't think so. Okay. Can you hear me now?
The mic's off. Turn the mic on.
That stopped the clock. Oh, okay. All right. Good evening, council members and President Vincenti. I would like to start first by thanking Mr. Guthrie for attending the school board meetings and displaying an interest in our children's education. That is very refreshing. I would also like to thank Mr. Penman for proposing term limits. I agree and support this position and that we need to have term limits. Mr. Bennett, I would also like to thank you for attending the school board meetings and agree that the current reading curriculum is deficient and needs to be replaced. I was also wondering if you will be holding true to your campaign promise to donate half of your council salary back to the community. If so, who would you be donating this salary to? I'm here to ask that you confirm Mr. Cassily's nominations to the school board and mention why you should vote yes to confirming them. Number one, all three individuals are extremely qualified and will focus on student achievement. Mr. Pointe, number two, Mr. Pointe, Ms. Strauss, and Ms. Koker have impressive credentials that would be an asset to the school board and our community. Number three, while I do not know them personally, I believe they will put the needs of our children first and build positive relationships. I believe that they will set politics aside in making good, sound judgments and decisions and do what is best for all students. They will help to improve the quality of public education for children of all ages, incomes, and backgrounds. And finally, I want to thank Mr. Bob Cassily for his continued hard work and for his excellent picks and for doing what is right for our children and future generations. Psalms 127:3 says, "Behold, children are heritage from the Lord, the fruit of the womb a reward; like arrows in the hand of a warrior are the children of one's youth." Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Brenda Pedrick. Is it working?
I'm sorry?
Is it working? Okay.
Yes.
I live at 1002 Markham Court, Bel Air. Good evening, council members. I am a mother of an elementary school student here in Harford County, and I wanted to commend Mr. Cassily on his three appointees and encourage the council to support his decision as well. As a concerned mother that has only been in this fight for proper education and parental rights for just under a year now, I want to speak on behalf of the other conservative parents that are afraid to speak. I say this because there has been some rhetoric from certain groups that imply that us conservative parents or far-right groups are the minority and that putting conservatives on the BoE won't reflect or support the majority. Well, I say this is false. Yes, if you were to go to a BoE meeting currently on any given night or watch online, you will see more support for these groups, and yes, they have a right to speak, and good for them that they are good at drumming up support. But I can also tell you that because they are so bold and outspoken at times, they intimidate others that would like to speak out, the ones that want to speak out against them, I should say. Sadly, there are so many people that are afraid to speak up because they fear backlash. We have become a society that is so concerned about being politically correct or being called out for their opinions, that rather than be honest and speak up, they remain silent and tiptoe around anyone that they might offend. Well, honestly, I'm sick of it. I won't be that person that's silent, and I will speak my mind and my truth. And the funny thing is that that's what the other side wants, too. It's a free country. So, some say that these three appointees are too conservative and don't reflect the majority. Again, this is false. And the way that I see it, our past Harford County BoE was staffed to represent a more liberal way of thinking. With county executive Cassily's appointees, these three new members, I feel this will make an even playing field, and I respectfully ask that you go forward with these three appointees. appointees. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Cassandra Beverly, followed by Cheryl Adams.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Cassandra Beverly, 137 Alice Anne Street, Bel Air, Maryland. Good evening, county council, President Vicente, and members of the council. I represent the Caucus of African-American Leaders, whose mission it is to advocate for fairness, equity, and inclusion for African-Americans in this county. In the month of February, we take time to highlight the contributions made by black men and women to the building of this nation. We unearth the hidden treasures of our history to tell the stories of those whose role in the development of America have for far too long gone unnoticed and unheralded. Last year, I had the pleasure of attending the unveiling of the monument dedicated to Sergeant Alfred B. Hilton, the only native-born Hartford Countyan to be awarded the Medal of Honor. Sergeant Hilton is but one of many whose lives were not thought worthy of this community's recognition and honor. Sergeant Alfred B. Hilton is African-American. I urge each of you and the broader community to look beyond Dr. King, Harriet Tubman, and Frederick Douglass as you seek to learn about the contributions black folks have made to this country. Our community will not acquiesce in any efforts to keep the history and contributions of our people buried, ignored, or misrepresented. There's a movement in this country and this county to keep the true history of this nation from being taught and celebrated. We will not remain silent and allow the negative and downright false narratives about how our students are being educated about matters of race to gain a foothold in this county. I'm deeply detroubled by the nominees put forward by the county executive for the Board of Education. I'm fairly certain that Dr. Pointon, after working on Governor DeSantis's campaign, wants to import his ideas to this county. We must not be persuaded that, we must not be persuaded that we can make progress by banning books and refusing to teach truth to students. We will not endorse candidates who support groups who seek to deny black and white students the right to learn the truth, even when it is uncomfortable. The health and welfare of our community demands that these nominees receive a no vote. Do not play politics with the lives of our students. Black Lives Matter and Black History Matters. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Cheryl Adams, 2025 Colgate Circle. County Executive Cassely, in his first few sentences, talked about the beautiful diversity of Hartford County, which is not exactly represented by our council here, but I assure you that there is beautiful diversity here. And I hope that when you take this week to go over the three appointees that Cassely has offered for Board of Ed, you will keep that in mind and keep the remaining diversity of the county in mind, as was just talked about. And I Googled the three, you know, did a quick search and thought, I'm not so sure that all of the children of Hartford County are going to be adequately represented on the board with these three nominees. But I do lift leadership from, and NAACP from the Black Caucus. I trust and value their thoughts and their words on it and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Linda Stein Flint, followed by Emma Peller.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Linda Stein Flint, 43 Winslow Drive in Bel Air. Good evening, council members and council president. My first comment is addressed to Councilwoman Bennett. Congratulations, you know, on you winning your election. You were not my choice of candidate, but you won. We all have to move on and work together. But what really concerns me is how during your campaign, you intended to deceive and mislead the people of Hartford County because our county charter clearly states that you cannot be employed by the Hartford County government and especially when 51% of our budget is going to the Board of Education. It is a conflict of interest. Years ago, when Councilwoman Snutsky ran for the position, the, there was an uproar and he retired so that there was no conflict of interest. You will have to recuse yourself from many decisions. The budget decision, infrastructure decisions, because infrastructure is budget and that's a conflict of interest. The new schools that are coming, you cannot even have any input into the candidates that County Executive Cassely has put forth for the school board. You have to recuse yourself in so many, so you are not a benefit to your constituents and to Hartford County. The charter has been voted on, any amendments and everything have to be voted on by the people. You know, the council, you know, puts the amendment forward and the people vote on that. You're doing a disservice. And what a poor example to the students that you are now teaching to show a complete lack of respect for our county charter, our process, and everything that we have here. I hope you, I mean, I have no problem with you staying on the council, but you need to find yourself a job that is not as a teacher, someplace else, doing something else in Hartford County. And...
Ms. Flint, hold on just a minute. No more of that, please. The last thing I want to do is clear this chambers tonight, but I will. Go ahead, ma'am.
So, so yes, so yes, you're welcome to stay on the council, but just please, find another job so that you can stay on and be of benefit to your constituents. We will hold you accountable about your promise of your salary. You said that you were going to donate half of your salary, so we will be following up to find out where that is going and what you are supporting. And to the council and all of you and council president, please support County Executive Cassely's appointments to the school board because they are three individuals that would add to the quality of candidates that we have in the school board now that were all voted in. And they will work for all the students of Hartford County and they will respect parents' rights. And they will also work on, they are also about, you know, reading, writing, math, civics, history, arts. They're about having our students be better students and that they will be more productive in society. And I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bennett, you will not be able to vote on that, so please do make sure you recuse yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Emma Peller, followed by Robert McArter.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Emma Peller, 1447 Redfield Road, Bel Air. Good evening, council president and council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here representing not only myself, but as a proud member of the Hartford County branch of the NAACP. In 2021, the highest court in Maryland disbarred a former Hartford County State's Attorney. He was disbarred for withholding evidence in a murder case and lying about it for years. The court thought this was so egregious that they made the decision to disbar, even though the attorney had been retired for years, in order to ensure he could never return to practice. His response? I don't give a damn. Does that sound very ethical to you? The State's Attorney in this case is Joseph Cassely, brother of County Executive Bob Cassely, and appointed to the Board of Ethics. Is this the best person for the job who can make ethical decisions on complex issues that arise during the operation of our county government? This is yet another example of the executive branch acting in their own interest, not the interest of the citizens of the county. Please vote no on the appointment of Joseph Cassely to the Board of Ethics. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Hi, Robert McArter, 1301 Markey Court in Fallston. I first want to congratulate everyone, all the council men and women that were elected by your district. You have been entrusted with making great decisions on behalf of not only your district, but on behalf of everyone in Hartford County. And I do congratulate you and also Bob Cassely for, for winning his, his portion as well as county executive. I just want to share a couple of things. I don't have notes with me, but again, my name is Robert McArter and I'm a proud Native American, as you can very well see by my complexion and bald head. That's a joke. Some people can laugh if you like. It's okay. But I am a proud Native American with the OSH Tribe in Pawasko, Oklahoma. And I'm just excited to be a long, longstanding citizen and businessman here in Hartford County. And I just want to share that, you know, my wife and I, we do a podcast. We're up to almost 100 episodes. And there's something that I love about Hartford County is we enjoy interviewing business owners and things like that, but the biggest thrill that I have is to be able to reach out to those that are charitable organizations throughout our county. You do not even realize how many individual charitable organizations there are that have their heart and their soul poured into each one of your districts. Extreme Family Outreach would be one of them, but they're just one of so many that serve the underserved communities throughout our county. And I just want to encourage you to, as these meetings continue throughout the year, to lean in to the voices of those that are sometimes voiceless and to lean into what their needs are for the community. Because my wife and I listen to them on a bi-weekly basis on our podcast and we really enjoy hearing the things that they are doing for our great county here in Hartford. The second thing I just want to mention is that you, well, I'll pass that for another time, but anyhow, I know we're tight on time here, but I just want to share that also that the voices of the, of the children of this great county will finally be heard, will finally be voiced out through our Board of Education. And I really do encourage you to please, to please pass the three nominations and include them into the Board of Education. These are great voices that need to be heard. I stand in lieu of the five grandchildren that I have and I want to be the great grandad for them and to know that they are going to be raised throughout the school district of Hartford County in a great and equitable and diverse time that we're in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Call your next speaker.
Beth Shepherd, followed by Gary Johnson.
Name and address, please.
My name is Beth Shepherd and I live at 1406 Pumpkin Patch Court. I live in the Autumn Run Town Home Development in Abingdon and I've lived there since 2011. In this development, there are 11 homes on Pumpkin Patch, which are nestled in the woods and secluded from the main part of the development. And all of us that live on this little court bought our homes because of the beautiful scenery of the trees, especially in the fall, which surrounded our homes. In January of 2019, at a DAC meeting, we learned of the proposed destruction, 330 acres of forestry to put in warehouses and that are going to directly affect us as residents with increased traffic, tractor trailers going in and out 24 hours a day, 24/7, loss to home and property values, et cetera. This past summer, I bared witness, along with my neighbors, an absolute horror as ginormous pieces of equipment tore down tree after tree after tree, falling like pickup sticks. The forest was being raped and there was nothing anybody could do about it. We knew this was coming, but we had no idea of the magnitude of the destruction happening right before our eyes. How could this be happening? They were so close to our homes. Tonka trucks were from me to you away in our backyards. The noise was deafening. How can giant mega warehouses be going in right in our backyard? Day after day, weekend after weekend, late into the evening, these giant tonka toys were tearing down the forest as quickly as they could. And now, instead of looking out my back window or sitting on my deck, looking at beautiful trees in the fall, I now look at stormwater ponds, black and orange silk fencing with big red signs that say, "Keep out, violators will be prosecuted." There is no more buffer as the trees that once lined the entrance to our court are gone and now all we hear is the traffic buzzing from I-95. When the citizens of Hartford County go to the polls in November to vote, we elect officials that we think and hope will represent us and our values and our best interests. During the last several years, myself, neighbors, and others, along with the Hartford County climate action, have fought every step of the way to let our former county executive know that we do not want these mega warehouses built in our neighborhoods and the reasons why, but it fell on deaf ears. We were ignored and turned down at every point, pursuing his own agenda and political gain, never agreeing to any meeting with us to hear our complaints. But finally, this past November, a new county executive was elected. People actually changed their affiliation so they could vote for Mr. Cassely. Finally, we have someone who has been listening to the cries of the citizens of Hartford County, but now is in a position to do something about it instead of ignoring us and hoping we will go away. I am here tonight to ask you for support of Mr. Cassely's moratorium to put a six-month pause on approvals of permits for county warehouse projects. As Mr. Cassely stated, it will give his administration time to study the zoning and develop these regulations...
Ms. Shepherd, please bring your comments to a close.
I'm sorry?
Please bring your comments to a close. Your time is up.
Okay. I'm just asking that you'll support this moratorium on warehouse projects.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Name and address. My name is Gary Johnson. I live at 704 Pleasant Hill Circle in Kingsville, Maryland, 21087. I didn't really come here tonight prepared to speak, but I was aware of certain issues. I have been aware of them. In fact, ever since the COVID pandemic, which was unleashed on us by the Communist Chinese, brought our state and our nation to a, to a halt, kept our children out of school. And because of that, because we have a grandchild in school, because we have other relatives and friends who teach in the school system and who have children in the school system, we became aware of things that to us were shocking, the way that our students were being taught, the things that they were being taught, the abuses that they were forced to be subjected to, and the fact that the teachers and administrators that we had entrusted them to were not only not doing anything to protect them, but that were sometimes covering up such abuses. I find that appalling. And so I rise to speak in support of the county executive's appointees that he has appointed to the Hartford County Board of Education. Someone mentioned before the electoral victory that you all have achieved and that has put you in your positions. That's because those people who voted for you entrusted you and entrusted to make good judgment in the decisions regarding the citizens in your areas. Likewise, Executive Cassely won a significant majority, sixty-some percent, sounds like a mandate to me. So it really doesn't make any difference how many people on opposing sides gather in these meetings and however impressive their arguments may be. The fact is that he was entrusted to make those judgments and in his judgment, these three people that he has appointed to the Board of Education are the best choice for the sake of our children. So I encourage each and every one of you to support his nominees and to place these people on the board so we can restore some sense of sanity to our school system. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Rick Check, followed by Bill Whalen.
Name and address, please.
I'm Rick Check. I live at 2421 Alkemberry Court. And I'm here also to bespeak on the support for County Executive Cassely's appointees, where he wishes to appoint to the school board. I want to appeal a little bit differently. I'm going to try to appeal to your logic for a minute because I think what you really know, you know what's going on as far as some of the literature in there that is of highly objectionable nature. And I want you to consider this, this is literature you would never dream of giving to your own grandchildren to read. It's literature that you would have me taken out and escorted by the officers if I chose to read it here. Yet somehow, we think that it's appropriate that our young youth can use it, even starting in the seventh grade. I want you to think about that logic for a minute. You know, the school board is the first line of defense for the future of our children. Adding school board members who believe in the value of a moral conscience is of a key first interest for the safety of our communities, for our future businesses, and for having people come up and be up through school system as good citizens. The thing that I'm concerned about is that we must consider that our youthful imaginations are not defiled with highly sexual imagery. You're all intelligent. You all know that people who spend much time in pornographic imagery become people who become serial rapists and things like that. They become a menacing community. Yet, when you read about some of these books, such as the book All Boys Aren't Blue, in that book, he talks about anal sex. This book's allowed to be read by seventh graders. Even if the book is written by a minority, I really don't care who wrote the book. I think the content is irrelevant. Well, actually, it's irrelevant for the goodness of our children. I think it should be in. I think having the right people on the school board is important. It'll help you to set up and establish a precedent for the future, for the safety of our children and for their minds, their imaginations. Now, I would celebrate a book written by a minority that supports law enforcement, celibate lifestyle, respect of elders, and things like that. And what I'm saying to you, I don't really care who really writes the books. You know, I remember a millionaire, multimillionaire, got up and spoke. It was an Amway convention years ago. Name was Bill Britt. He said, "People become by one of two influences: who they hang around and what they read." Think about that. You know, this is a chance, and if we can do something on the school board to begin to bring some type of censorship that is for a healthy imagination of the youth for tomorrow, we should consider it, and we should walk that path." You know? Another thing about removing things like history and altering our history.
Mr. Check, please bring your comments to a close.
Okay. Apologize. I thought I had over a minute. I'll close right there. I think I said enough.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Bill Whalen, 415 Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland. Good evening, Mr. Vincent and council members. I'm going to make four comments this evening. First, I support a six-month moratorium for the county warehouse projects as proposed by the county executive. It is most certainly needed for Perryman Peninsula and Abingdon Woods. Second, I noted Bill 23003 for council term limits was scratched for interdiction this evening. I, as have I said in the past, fully support term limits and know there are pros and cons to such legislation as it would be for any new proposed legislation. However, in the case of term limits, the most important thing is for the right of all eligible voters in this county to decide in 2024 whether they're for or against term limits. In my opinion, it would be wrong for council members to not allow the eligible voters to decide. Third, the issue of power and authority of the Department of Planning and Zoning and the Board of Appeals, which is the county council, in zoning appeal cases, needs to be resolved. It's become apparent zoning code sections 267 and 267-9 are ambiguous and subject to one's interpretation with a matter of authority. There are those who have taken a position that the executive branch is not obligated to enforce the final decision of the Board of Appeals while stating it is the final decision of the county in the absence of appeal. The county is the county. There are others who take the position that the Board of Appeals does have the power and authority to enforce its final decision, especially when it's ignored by the administration and there is no appeal. I believe this authority applies especially to zoning cases when it's proven by the findings of fact and conclusions of law that the Director of Planning made an inherent error in his final determination and no court appeal was made. It should not be left to the discretion of the executive branch in that case. I have sent considerable correspondence on this matter to the current administration and also copied you, Mr. Vincenti, and Mr. Attorney. To the best of my knowledge and belief, there still has been no resolution. Therefore, I believe the executive branch and legislative branch need to confer, resolve the matter, and modify the zoning code accordingly to remove that ambiguity and make it perfectly clear as to each power and authority. This will prevent future issues and unnecessary costs to taxpayers, which occurred in the past. Finally, I want to thank Mr. Tony G. and his legislative aide Caitlin for sending me the results of the meeting with the Director of Planning and Zoning last week with Bel Air Village. We both agree it's a project that's further going to increase traffic congestion. We need to look at that carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tracy Lee, followed by Margie Gallagher.
I'll call another speaker. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Why don't you step up, ma'am? Did you sign up? Step up. Thank you, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Thank you, County Council President Vincenti and County Council members. My name is Tracy Waite, and my address is 617 Foxcroft Drive in Bel Air, Maryland. And I've submitted my comments to you in a letter, so I'm going to shorten them a little bit here for the audience. I understand that, oh, I also wanted to mention that I'm the Advisory Board President of the local nonprofit Hartford County Climate Action. I understand that you have received a draft for a six-month moratorium on construction of warehouses from the county executive. On behalf of our citizens and the environment, Hartford County Climate Action supports this moratorium in principle, although we don't have a copy of it yet. In fact, we feel that the moratorium should continue until our zoning code can be amended to include a new category for the mega warehouses, also called freight terminals and e-commerce facilities that are planned for the BTC3 I-95 Logistics Center at Abingdon Woods and the Chesapeake Real Estate Group Development at Perryman. Also, we feel that a moratorium should continue until the zoning code can be amended to prohibit this new industrial zoning category from being approved immediately next to residentially zoned properties and vice versa. Industrial zonings mean diesel fume emissions and tractor trailer traffic, and residential zonings mean children's lungs and bodies. The two should never be side by side. So please pass. We hope you will pass Mr. Cassely's moratorium and use that six months to revise Hartford County zoning code to include a new freight terminal category and to prohibit mixing industrial development and residential neighborhoods. Since I have a little bit of time left, I also, you know, may just mention that although I approve strongly of Mr. Cassely's work in this moratorium and what he's doing, you know, hopefully for Abingdon Woods and Perryman, I'm deeply troubled by the school board nominees. I am also a parent who had a child in Hartford County schools, and we all, I hope, know that gay people really do exist. I have a child who is one of them, and, you know, it's not a cult, you know? It's just a child. And when she was going to school, I wanted that school district to, you know, be affirming and supportive and protective of her, just like all the other students. And that's why I'm concerned by some of the rhetoric that I'm hearing here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Margie Gallagher, Smallwood Drive, Abingdon. I'm here tonight to support Bob Cassely's appointments to the Board of Education. There has been opposition to his decision from the NAACP of the Hartford County, claiming that these appointees do not reflect the Board of Education's mission, vision, and long-term goals. I would like to know exactly what their basis for that allegation is. What exactly is it that these appointees don't meet in the board's mission, vision, and long-term goals? Or is it that these appointees don't meet the mission, vision, and long-term goals of the NAACP? So out of curiosity, I Googled, "What is the most important responsibility of a school board?" And Google said, "The most important responsibility of a school board is to work with their communities to improve student achievements in their local public schools." It seems that this is not the agenda of the NAACP, as it was also stated in a letter to the council that, quote, "Despite the appointees' professional credentials, the NAACP does not believe their ideologies best represent the whole county." This is where the hypocrisy begins. We can't even get diversity on a school board because they want the entire board to have the same ideologies as them. The board's responsibility should be to focus on excellence in academics, protecting parental rights, supporting teachers, and communicating with the community, and not pushing a woke agenda on these children. Focus should be on educating children in reading, writing, math, science, factual history, and the arts. I'm still wondering whatever happened to geography. We need to keep CRT, LGBTQ+, whatever ideologies out of the school because a board of education is not a board of indoctrination. Thank you.
Suzie Scott, followed by Tanya Tayo.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Suzie Scott. I live at 314 Street Circle in Forest Hill. Good evening, members of the County Council. As I said, I'm Suzie Scott. I'm also the chapter chair of Moms for Liberty here in Hartford County. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate our county executive for the exceptional candidates that he has identified to fill the appointed positions on our Board of Education. These candidates have such impressive resumes and credentials. They are, they will be a very welcome addition to the Board of Education, and I hope that you will approve them, and I look forward to their tenure on the board. I'd also like to express my gratitude to these amazing Hartford County citizens for their desire to serve the students, parents, and staff of Hartford County Public Schools. They have a big task in front of them, and I just want to offer my support. I'd also like to address the misinformation that has been presented to this council with regards to my organization, Moms for Liberty, Hartford County. We are moms, dads, grandparents, aunts, uncles, citizens, and we're dedicated to defending our parental rights over our children's education, their medical care, and their moral upbringing. We are the watchdogs over our school district because we know what is taught in our classrooms steers the future of Hartford County and ultimately, America. For far too long, our nonpartisan school board has held sway over the parents and taxpayers of this county. The teachers' union has exerted powerful influence over the board with backing from partisan political groups and special interests whose radical ideologies have been introduced into our public schools well before COVID exposed them. So it's not surprising that the education cartel that has operated with little resistance for so long is not happy to see Moms for Liberty here, and they don't want us to be present. They don't want us to speak out on ideologies and policies that are adversely affecting our children, and so they call us names, and they create false narratives about us and our motives. While I say God bless them, I'm glad that they are free to exercise their First Amendment rights, and we intend to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Someone adjust that mic for her.
I'm a shrimp. Hi, I'm Tanya Tayo, and my address is 1341 Mary Hill Court. I wanted to thank Bob Cassely for his appointments for the Board of Education. I believe that these are all qualified choices. Our public school system and Board of Education still need a lot of help to get our schools back to normal, and our county executive said that he needs to get a handle on our school budget. The Board of Education needs to be transparent. They need to work for children, parents, teachers, and citizens. Our children missed a lot of time during COVID, and agendas were pushed before and after. These ideologies are still being pushed. These political and gender ideologies do not belong in school. I have a huge concern about my older son, this is a separate subject, who goes to Hartford Tech. He's a senior this year and graduating under the computer-aided machining program. I don't know if you guys are aware, and I will be bringing this to the Board of Education, but they will not be receiving a certificate. They didn't receive a certificate last year either. The reason is, is that they do not have a teacher that is qualified to teach that trade. And this is like very disheartening because my son has had an A. He's a senior, like the whole time during COVID and everything, and he's not going to graduate with a certificate. I have a real problem with that, and I think you guys need to look into this. I expect this situation to get fixed, as a school should not keep offering a class that is supposed to have a certificate to go along with its graduation. Thank you.
Ron Stucinski, followed by David Bauer.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Councilman Ron Stucinski. Good evening, Ron Stucinski, 319 Marina Avenue, Perryman. First, I wanted to thank Aaron Pennman for last week returning my call with the issue with the parking ride in Abingdon. I don't even know if that's spelled Abingdon. And also, everyone that got back to me after I sent the picture, I guess last week, of the tractor trailer on Old Stephanie Road that came apart and just blocked the road, just the front of it. I don't know where it went, but he left it back. But I appreciate everyone getting back to me and looking into it. I was informed tonight by Mr. Voister, I believe, that we now have a tractor-trailer division coming in, Mr. Gayler, if I'm correct, or? Okay. That can help the state police out in some of the patrols that we have. And I appreciate that. And I also asked Mr. Gayle, as you know, we don't have our own police force down there per se, but we have a lot of employer, employees, et cetera, that are using our roads down there as raceways. And it's, hopefully, it's addressed more. I know we're all short-staffed. I get it. But hopefully, it's addressed more. But I did want to bring up some of the things of trucking and the Maryland idling law, which states a motor vehicle engine may not be allowed to operate more than five consecutive minutes when the vehicle's not in motion. I think I bring this up because as I was coming home the other night when that tractor-trailer was jackknifed, I passed a Wawa in Aberdeen when there was 11 tractor-trailers parked, all of them running when I was getting gas, clearly against our state law. But I was told by both Walmart and Wawa that because they're private property that we can't address that issue, which I don't understand because if I have an issue of my private property, it could be addressed. So I'm hoping we can do more to just address the, I mean, it's getting worse and worse and the pollution itself, and I know Ms. Waite touched on it. Health studies show that exposure to diesel exhaust primarily affects the respiratory system, worsens asthma, allergies, bronchitis, and lung function. And there's also evidence that diesel exhaust exposure can increase the risk of heart problems, premature premature death, and lung cancer. And it doesn't help that we live on water because it also helps keep everything in the air longer. So I just ask that council and our sheriff's department pay more attention to this with all the trucks that sit on the side of our highways and sit in these parking lots and our parking rides that clearly are posted, no trucks, no overnight parking. And then last, I think what a lot of people need to understand, Ms. Flint, you're one of them, is that we did vote for Jacob Bennett. I'm a Republican, and I wonder what was right. You have no idea what we're going through in our community, none, right? And I get it. Curtis Beal's a good guy, but he clearly sat up here and said, "If you don't like what we're doing, vote us out." And that's kind of rang, you know, to all of us. And it's nothing personal against you or the Republican Committee or any, because we all get it. It's not about D's and R's sometime. We do need to work together. And right now, I am, I personally am pleased with what we're getting from our council. They're responsive. I know, I know our president is happy to be able to walk in the door and talk to our executive without having problems. So I just ask that we give these people a chance. And, you know, whatever happens with Jacob, I get it. We love you, and we're pulling for you, and that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Name an address, please.
David Bauer, 2952 Kirkwall Court, Abingdon. To begin, I have a comment on the budget. The county executive has put out a narrative that amounts to saying the previous administration was irresponsible last year, setting up a budget situation that is not sustainable.
Mr. Bauer, can you step into that microphone a little bit?
Sorry. The budget for this current fiscal year uses a lot of built-up savings to both increase spending and cut taxes. Given that, we should all expect that this year's budget proposal begins by canceling last year's budget, sorry, last year's tax cut. I hope this has already been part of your discussion with the administration because it is the right thing to do, but I want to make sure that fiscal responsibility is a reality here and not just a narrative being used to justify unnecessary cuts. Next topic, Board of Education nominees. And I'll be nice and vague and not name names. At the start of December, I completed a term on the Board of Education as the elected member for District B. I thus have a reasonable idea of what the job includes, and a big thing it does not include is partisan politics. I have been very happy with the two replacement board members who were selected by the county council during my term. By contrast, I am not happy with any of the three nominees proposed recently by the county executive. State law says, quote, "Three members shall be appointed by the county executive, subject to the advice and consent of the county council," end quote. Did the county executive ask your advice? Did he in his office discuss the applicants with you all? I sure hope that you all didn't advise him to nominate partisan political activists, which is what he did. I request that you reject all three of these nominees. These are very much not the right people for the job. I would be happy to talk with any of you about this. In addition to my contact information being on the comment card, my council representative has my email address. I'm in District F now on the new map. And one last comment while I have time. It was very amusing to me to witness my lifelong Republican board, fellow board members being called liberal, communist, and Marxist. Thank you.
Paul Filacci, followed by Vicki Jones.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Hi, Vicki Jones, 30 West Beller Avenue, Aberdeen, Maryland. It is Black History Month, and I hope that each of you take time to learn more and celebrate the contributions Black people have made to this country and to this county. Our history is so rich. Black people were in America before we were enslaved in Africa and other countries. Black people contributed significantly to all of this country, including inviting many of our luxuries today, inventing many of our luxuries today, and even built generational wealth for many of your families. Learning about the history also includes learning the history of the NAACP. I am proud to be the president of the Harford County NAACP. I realize that for some reason, even some of you in this room believe that we are in this for the money. I think someone on Facebook said today it's all about the Benjamins. We are, each are volunteers, so we are not in this for the money. We are in this for the passion and because we believe what's right, and we want a better Harford County. Our members are many colors. We are Republicans, we are Democrats, and independent. We are a nonpartisan organization. At the Board of Education meeting on January 23rd, Harford County experienced an outpouring of support for equity and inclusion. This type of support has not been evident or visible during the pandemic and post-pandemic times, where extreme conservative advocates have dominated the Board of Education, public comment, and this county council. Having so many folks in the room with, against these opposing extreme views gave potential so that we could be closer together and be closer as a county. And no matter how uncomfortable it is, many more people are here tonight in support of what's right. Through Board of Education appointments, the Harford County Executive has placed its allegiance to this minority and divisive point of view. The Board of Education appointees do not reflect the Board of Education's missions, vision, or long-term goals. Someone asked, "Where can you find that?" It is not the NAACP's. It's with the Board of Ed, and you can ask your representative for that information. We love this county. We love being in Harford County, and we want nominees who demonstrate allegiance to safety, are wanting for our children to be informed and taught the truth, not the real truth or the good history, and stand for inclusiveness, equity for all Harford County residents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Did, did I hear you say Mr. Filacci's? Are you not speaking tonight, sir? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
William Martino, followed by Janine Canito.
Good evening. William Martino, 1207 Teford Road. Pigeon One State, the Father of Glory, may give you the spirit of wisdom, and Proverbs tells us, "How much better to get wisdom than gold, to get insight rather than silver." Harford County Board of Education desperately needs members who have wisdom. A good educational system holds a line across various ideologies and focuses on academics. I support, support Board of Education candidates that will advocate for the rights of parents and the citizens of Harford County. The previous board, led by Dr. Bolson, has consistently diminished the voices of parents, exposing their belief in state ownership of our children. We need a new board that understands the core mission of the educational system is to focus on academics and listen to the concerns of parents. When reading proficiencies in elementary students drops 20% to 50%, depending on the district, over the past 20 years, we have lost the focus on the core mission. The most significant drops in reading abilities have occurred in Title I schools. We have allowed the Board of, to distract Harford County pupils with activist interest instead of concentrating on academics. The present Board of Education under Bolson regime has significantly lowered academic scores all across the county. But instead of allocating educational resources to repair the broken system, they decide on moving more funds to supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion material. How will DEI fill the future job market? How will the next generation of Harford County students support themselves? I sure don't want them living with me. Maybe Dr. Bolson, Carol Mueller, Wade Sewell, and Carol Bruce will let them live in their basement. The educational system is heading in the wrong direction, and the present leadership wants to continue on that path. We need new leadership. Please approve the county executive's recommendation to fill the school board positions and return the educational system back to academics. If these candidates are approved, I will be at the Board of Educational meetings, and if they don't support parents' rights, they will certainly hear from me. Thank you tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Janine Canito, 305 Duffy Court, Forest Hill. I moved to Harford County in 2006, and I was struck by how family-oriented it was and its core values that reflected that. But there has been a major shift. I watched the Board of Education meeting live and had intended to make some comments about the presence of the NAACP, but I'm going to kind of switch gears based on what I've heard many of the speakers talk about. I'll be honest and say that the issue of racism for some years now has been a distraction for the real issue, and I think the real issue is the sexualization of our children. Pornography has absolutely no place in our schools, whether it's in cartoon form or otherwise. I'm embarrassed by some of the books that are in our schools, and you should be too. As a psychiatric nurse practitioner who's been treating children and adolescents for almost 40 years, kids who have been over-sexualized, we are playing with fire here. There is no good reason why a seventh grader needs to be taught about blowjobs and anal sex. There is absolutely no reason for it. If you can come up with one, I'd be glad to hear it. You know, I've been attending your meetings for some time now, and I don't know how y'all stay awake and alert through most of them, quite frankly. I know zoning and fire hydrants are important, but they are still very fundamentally boring to listen to. And I don't know if the content of those meetings have led to complacency, or you have been blinded by the very over-white smile of our former county executive, but we intend to hold you accountable. You are our county legislation. You are effectively our Congress, and we need you to act as such and to reflect the values of Harford County. I don't need to point out how many mama bears are in this room, but there will be no more putting heads in the sand and avoiding this topic. We are not in Kansas anymore, and I really encourage you to embrace your role in what we're seeing now. It has to stop. That's all.
Our last two speakers this evening, Delane Lewis, followed by Daniel Flannery.
Thank you. My name is Delane Lewis, 2714 Pemberton Ridge, Baldwin, Maryland. First of all, I'm very glad, Mr. Pennman, that you returned his call. He's not your constituent. I'm your constituent. I've emailed you twice, and I haven't heard, and it's not about any of these topics I'm going to discuss. So please let me know the best way to communicate with you, because I would like to have a discussion about some other topics, not just the one we've been discussing tonight. I would just like to point out that our system of government that allows our community executive to hide from his constituents, and we could change that, you know, we don't have to accept that. I think a county executive should have to attend meetings and hear from the public. The county executive, out of the box, sought to undo the will of the people by wasting our tax dollars in the pursuit of denying Councilman Bennett his job. He has already begun signaling that he will not be funding education, and somehow that feels like a threat. Reverend Dr. Tillman said it best at the last Board of Education meeting, "You judge a society by how they value and prioritize their children." That would include how we fund public education. The county executive has now appointed three people, two of whom have clear and obvious political agendas, in the face of when we really need to be having nonpartisan members who will focus on what is the best interests of children and teachers. I will remind you that children have civil rights also, and the agenda of some groups attempt to ignore that. They run around with their hair on fire, creating imaginary issues where there are none. We understand the power of repeating something often enough that it takes on a false legitimacy. Their fear is demonizing our children and harming them. It is sickening to watch. They are obsessively, they are the ones who are obsessively focusing and talking about sex. My concern about the Board of Education appointments is that they have agendas that will cause actual harm to the children and employees of Harford County Public Schools. If that is the case, I hope that there are sufficient funds budgeted for outside council because if their civil rights are violated, there will be lawsuits. People talk about a mandate. I want to remind you that seven people ran for Board of Education that would fall into this hair-on-fire category, and five of them lost, because this anti-child rhetoric is ugly, and most citizens and voters do not support it.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir.
My name is Daniel Flannery. I reside at 2323 Schuster Road, Jertsville, 21084. Since I'm the last guy to be up here, I'm going to make my comments brief and to the point. I want to congratulate Bob Cassely on the three candidates he is recommending to this council. I urge our council to confirm these appointments. This Board of Education needs a balance. It's been far too long that this Board of Education has gone along with left agenda by specialty groups that have special interests, and they have approved things pretty much carte blanche. I urge for you to appoint these three. I think that it would add the perfect balance to this, to the arguments and, and the various issues that come up before this Board of Education. We need to support our children in education, not indoctrination. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others, Ms. Dixon?
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you.